Nine years, ten years.
Okay, call the meeting back to order at six forty-two. Let me grab my agenda. Okay, it's first meeting on the agenda, public input. Is there anybody that has any matters discussed that is not, are not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on. There is no student report tonight. So we'll go to the new business. Amy Luckowicz.
We're having A to D issues.
Oh.
We're getting the, uh...
Fun.
...audio burn.
Why did Rich not make it down here? I didn't notice Rich was in there, sorry.
Do you think we need a copy of the slides? They're not pretty. They're in black and white.
Are they the same thing that was in our packet?
I think we all have them.
You want to sit down?
Yeah.
In case you wanted to.
Thank you. Trying to sneeze on it.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you. Good to see you.
I didn't realize Rich wasn't here. You don't know.
Want me just start?
No, I said, I didn't realize Rich wasn't here when I called to order, sorry.
You on vacation?
Go ahead.
All set?
Yes.
Well, hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hello. Good to, I don't think I've met everybody. So I'm Amy, hi.
Chris.
Good to meet you, and I don't think we've met officially. I've seen you.
Diana.
Yes, nice to meet you, thank you. Um, so today we're just gonna go through our revised report. So I think you have the most current copy, but um, if you remember the survey that you all approved, we call it the core measurement survey. This is a survey that we take annually as part of our requirement for the federal drug-free communities grant. This survey, and the one that you approved, includes behavioral questions, but you're not gonna see that in the report tonight. There were about thirty-eight questions, so what you're seeing is just what we call the core measurement. And these are the questions that the federal government kind of, for lack of a better term, grades us on to see if we are moving in the trend of decreased use. And specifically, grades, middle school through high school. So they don't really have us take any measurements for elementary school, of course. And it's really related to the past thirty-day use, so we're gonna focus mostly on that. So every year, oh, sorry, here's the answer of the sample population, how many responses that we had, is on your page two. But our goals don't change, so um, we really structure everything around alcohol, tobacco, prescription drugs, and marijuana. And as you know, we're one of the few communities that break vaping out differently. So unfortunately, the federal government lumps vaping with tobacco when it comes to their numbers. They're just now starting to break it away because they understand it's two different behaviors, which we really need to do. But we've been breaking that number out for two years now, and that's really important to us to separate it because we do see conventional cigarette use on the decline. But I will give you a heads up that nationally, we're starting to see conventional cigarette use go back up because of vaping, which sounds a little counterintuitive. But the way it works is if you're building the brain pathways to nicotine and you vape inside, you smoke outside, and we're starting to see that across all ages, including adults, becoming dual, what's called dual-use users. So they'll vape inside and smoke outside. So although our conventional cigarette use is still low, especially nationally as well, we are expecting a trend to have that come back up as vaping continues to be the most popular substance across most ages. So if you look at, under the goals, and you see the last, uh, the last bullet point indicates we fulfill a requirement to the DFC grant, those are the four questions that we have to answer about the four drugs, and again, we just add vaping on, so we actually answer the four questions about five drugs.
When, when does the grant expire?
We are in year three of five years. Um, our, our fiscal year is actually October one to September thirty, so it's on a different schedule than the town as well. At the end of the fifth year, we're allowed to apply for an additional five years. It's not guaranteed, and we have to write the entire grant again.
Yeah.
It's a continuation grant, it's called. Then we can actually apply to be a mentor.
And are you more likely to get it if you have shown growth or not, or improvement or not shown improvement?
That's a really great question, you would think, but no. So they're really focused on how you answer the questions. You get scored out of a score of a hundred. And if you happen to write your grant in the year that everybody does a great job writing the grant, you're less likely. So what they do is they fu, they fund all the hundreds, then all the ninety-nines, then all the ninety-eights. But it's not dependent upon how you did with decreasing numbers. That's just how they report back up to the federal to, to indicate to our lawmakers that you need to continue to fund this. So statistically, we have evidence that says if you are a DFC-funded coalition, your community will have less drug use among, among youth. And that's been, that's been consistent, actually, for quite a while now, which is great.
And if I recall, we got this grant because you wrote the grant and you did a really good job.
Thank you.
And you were able to get it, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll probably be the one to write it again. But um, you know, one of the things that we did have a challenge with, and we, we actually did get it on the first time. Um, we scored a ninety-one, I believe, on the first time that we wrote it, and we didn't get it. And um, the reason we didn't get it is we got marked really low on a question related to data collection. So we've been really focusing on how to partner with the schools, law enforcement, and first responders, and even hospitals, on how to collect better information there. And on the second time, I believe, we scored a ninety-five. So they funded it. So we'll see. Um, so I'll turn your attention to the comparison of past thirty-day use. This is, to me, the heart of everything that we're working on. And you can see the changes. Some are minimal, some are a little bit more significant. Definitely concerned about marijuana use among twelfth graders. There was a pretty significant increase, not surprising as we continue to have more ways to use marijuana. And the, as we know, the legalization changed the perception of risk or harm related to marijuana. Nationally, we see this as well. So, to be specific, marijuana use does not just mean the conventional smoking. In fact, that's not common anymore. We're now seeing this would include edibles as well as vaping, which vaping is the number-one way in which young adults consume marijuana now. The old-school rolling of the flowers, pretty much out there now. Not common. And I will mention, too, that that last question related to prescription drugs, we do phrase the question as you guys reviewed it, is prescription drugs not prescribed to you? So that number is a little concerning as well. And that could be things like Adderall, antidepressants, uppers, everything across the board. We don't ask the kids to separate out what that might be. So continuing along, you'll see the vape use. And again, last year was the first year we separated that out. And Mrs. Bailey had a good question about vaping, uh, last year vaping non-nicotine, and last year vaping marijuana. So there's technically three options for vaping. You can vape something with nicotine. That would be most popular, would be, as you know, Juul. Uh, this, the second category would be vaping a non-nicotine product, and that would be vaping a juice that they are perceiving to not have nicotine in it or not. Whether it does or not is a different story, but what they're perceiving to not have a nicotine element to it. And the third one, third option being a vaping marijuana product. And that could be anything from what's called a dab pen to even vaping shatter or a harder form of nicotine, of marijuana.
What's shatter?
Shatter is similar, it's a concentrate. So it's similar to butane honey oil. I don't know if you've heard of that. It's the waxy material, but shatter, it's thinned out a little bit more, so it's, it almost looks like glass. Colored glass.
I love these things we have to keep up on.
Yeah, and just as we catch up on one thing, the next thing's came out. You know, one of the things on our radar, not to get off topic, but is, I don't know if you've heard of Kratom? So I just attended a federal conference about, in learning about Kratom. We're concerned that that's gonna be the next marijuana. And that is a plant-based drug that is, unlike other drugs, in which, depending on how much you take, has different, has opposing effects. Don't quote me on this, but if you take a small amount of it, it's a sedative. If you take a lot of it, it becomes an upper. It has a change, so it's very difficult for law enforcement to detect. There's no test for it, there's no field test for it, but it's very difficult for law enforcement to say that you're on something, and what did you take? And very easy to hide, there's strains of it. And similar to CBD, how it's being marketed, is the Cure-All. It's gonna take care of all your problems, from athlete's foot to hair loss and everything in between. So it comes from mostly Indonesia, Southeast Asia. So we just attended some seminars with the Drug Enforcement Agency on this about keeping an eye, and I will tell you that Detective Lucci and I have purchased it in town legally. It's a hundred percent legal. It's not being regulated at all. Always something to keep ahead of.
So with the vaping, I mean, obviously, this is, this is where I've had all the stars on mine, where it's like huge increase, especially like the marijuana from four-point-eight to forty-two and a half percent for seniors?
Yeah, I think it must have been underreported last year, because that's a really significant increase.
Yeah.
We did not change the phrase of, phrasing of that, so...
Can, can I look at this in a way where I can say, you know, I'm just looking at this page as a vape use twenty-eighteen to twenty-nineteen? I guess it would apply across the board. But can I say a ninth grader in twenty-eighteen is now a tenth grader in twenty-nineteen? And look at the delta between the two and continue to see that rise and that diagonal? You can look at it that way, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
In addition to that, you know, just keep in mind, too, as the kids get older, they have access to older people over twenty-one, and that's something that we look at. In fact, we know the number-one source of all substances for young adults is an older person. They identify it as an older friend, but it could be a sibling. As their, as their siblings go off to college, you know, they're likely closer to age when they're eleventh and twelfth graders. The other thing that we really try to look at is, you know, in North Reading, they have health in eighth, ninth, and tenth grade. Eleventh and twelfth grade, they don't. And so is there something missing there as well in health, in health class? We talked about that at the coalition meeting this morning. And is there a way for the coalition to help with that? To take a, subsidize that in some way?
Just would be interesting to follow them.
Yeah, for sure.
The actual grades, to see whether programs have an impact.
We actually have three years of data that we're gonna, you know, hopefully by the end of five, we'll have a really great snapshot.
And I thi, I think both those numbers are, are important, though, too, just to show that like current sixth graders versus last year's sixth graders also, because when you get into new school, when you get into, as you get older, I think you're, my, my theory would be it would, it's gonna increase.
Yeah, your access, yeah.
And this was the year we saw a significant increase. If you look at vaping non-nicotine last year, you know, we had zero vaping marijuana last year, zero at sixth grader. This is the year that we saw a bit of a jump in that one for sixth grade. Which tells me that now our education perhaps should be aimed for that particular substance at fifth grade.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Yes, actually, yes.
Do you think, do you think it matters with the high school and middle school being together? You think usage amongst middle school would be higher if there's a combined high school, middle school, or not?
That's a really good question. I, I'm gonna speak as my perception of talking to kids. In that, the middle schoolers think that vaping is a problem in the high school, but I don't think that they learn about it that way. If I ask middle schoolers who are not using what they think vaping is, they all say water vapor and Juuls. But that's because they heard about it on social media, not from being here. And I don't see a lot of crossover either. I don't see them interacting very much. Great question, though. I think it'd be interesting to compare with a school that is separated.
Yeah.
For analytical stuff, I think that's interesting. Um, moving on, student perception of risk or harm. I'll just make the note that typically, we see a correlation when students perceive something as being risky. Typically, a lower use. Couple trends on this is that, related to marijuana, we're seeing, uh, their perception of risk or harm related to marijuana and vaping, actually, is, is kind of all over the place. And if you ask what those harms are, there really isn't a great answer. So they might know one specific answer, and I'll give you the example of Juuling. They might say, oh, it does something to your lungs, but they're not thinking about the addiction that goes along with the nicotine. So that's something that's really not perceived as a risk. Same thing with marijuana. They don't perceive marijuana as being an addictive substance.
I see that on social media.
All the time.
The discussion in some Facebook groups are...
Yeah. Yep.
Where it's a sort of a misunderstanding of what we're talking about here.
I couldn't agree with you more.
And it's the addiction, of the addictive nature of, of nicotine.
And so since I have, just have a microphone, I'll just mention a couple of things related to today's marijuana and what we're seeing on social media from messaging from adults, not from kids, is that they'll say a couple of things like, oh, I used it back in the sixties and seventies, and I'm fine. I have said this time and time again, I wish we could rename marijuana. It is marijuana two-point-O. It is not the same thing from the sixties and seventies. It is, in some cases, tripled in strength, and I'm only talking about the flower version. When I start talking about the concentrates, we're up to ninety-nine percent in some concentrates. That didn't exist in the sixties and seventies, so you cannot compare the two. And potency, we know, increased potency, increased effects. The other thing that we know is that if you delay your use, and I don't preach abstinence, I preach delay, if you wait for any substance until after the age of twenty-five, twenty-six, you are more likely to be able to resist a developing addiction. We know that for adolescents who use marijuana, one in six become addicted. If you wait until you're after twenty-five, the numbers jump. And you're far more, because your brain weight, your brain is, I shouldn't use this word, but your brain is more developed and cooked, right? It's more fully developed. Pardon?
The denominator jumps. It's one in twenty.
Yes, it's huge, huge difference. And so I get frustrated when I hear parents or adults say to me, oh, I'm, I'm gonna let my kids use because I am fine with it. It's not, it's not yesterday's marijuana, and delay, delay, delay. If you wanna let your kids use or promote your kids using when they're twenty-five, twenty-six, I'm not gonna have anything to say about it, because we don't have the science that says marijuana is addictive after that age, but we do it before that age, and it is concerning. So the perception of risk or harm is definitely something that we, we will be working with the health classes on in that area. Just two areas of note to the next couple of slides is the student perception of parent disapproval. And we actually also take, uh, it's not in this report, but we do actually track the students' perception of peer disapproval. And that's the number of kids that say that they, um, their parents would be very upset or upset if they found out they, they were using those substances. And oftentimes, those numbers do not match what the parents say when we do the parent survey. So there's another disconnect there.
Is there any theory to why in twenty-eighteen, almost all eleventh graders thought their parents didn't approve of alcohol, and then next year, half of them said they're cool with it?
No idea.
Okay.
Very. Yep.
Of course, yeah.
Yep. Next page is related to self-identifying age-first use, and I'm sorry to report that it's trending down from sixteen to fifteen on average. Good thing with tobacco, you're seeing increase, but I am concerned about a trend down on any age-related question. Uh, the next slide about where students use substances, I get really frustrated again when parents' perception is that their number-one place where the kid uses at school, especially when it comes to vaping. When they tell me, oh, every kid is using in the, in the bathrooms, so why don't you put monitors in there? Well, our data is telling us otherwise, that it's at home or at a friend's house when they are, by the way, unsupervised. So I'm gonna go on record about this related to vaping monitors in bathrooms, the electronic devices. I'm currently against them, and that's for a couple of reasons. First of all, they're not proven to be effective, and it doesn't address the addiction part of vaping. If you put a electronic device to monitor vaping in a bathroom, and a kid has a legitimate addiction to that Juul, they're going to relocate. It's not gonna stop them from using it. That people who wanna do that to solve the problem don't understand that Juuling or vaping is an addiction in many cases, in most cases, actually, now because of the amount of nicotine in these products. So the coalition has taken that stance, they're also very expensive. If I thought that was gonna solve the problem, I would invest heavily federal funds from the grant into those to stop the problem, but I don't believe it will. Again, it's just gonna, in my opinion, just relocate the problem.
Excuse me, Amy. May I just add here that a few of us from the coalition, along with the high school assistant principal, attended a Mass Health Council Conference back in the spring on vaping, and I just wanted to echo that Amy's sentiments regarding the monitors in the bathroom were wholeheartedly echoed there for, you know, for those reasons and more. They were very, the, the people, the experts on the board seemed universally opposed to electronic monitoring or video monitoring in, in restrooms.
And then it's been discussed, or, uh, um, in the community? Has anybody heard of suggestions along those lines?
Yes.
You have?
It's on the, it's, I've seen it on the connection a couple times, and I've been asked that directly.
Good information to have us push through.
Sure, please do. Um, I do know that, I believe the VOTEC is, has invested in them, and they have promised to share their results over the next year about if they've been effective. And I'm very open to reading that report and how they, it's played out, and if it's been a good ROI for them, but I don't suspect it will be.
Well, I think also, we have to acknowledge that in some people's minds, a big problem is vaping on schoo, in school, and maybe they're solving that problem, and they're okay with that.
Right.
But that's not what our goal is.
Right. Um, I get asked all the time about North Reading versus the nation, so you'll see some information there from Monitoring the Future Study. Those are two thousand eighteen numbers, though, for the federal numbers. They haven't released the two thousand nineteen data. So it's a little bit apples to oranges in some ways, but just a year behind. So green is where, uh, North Reading is ahead, red is where North Reading is behind.
So you're, you're comparing twenty-eighteen to twenty-nineteen numbers for North Reading, or you're comparing twenty-eighteen to twenty-eighteen?
Eighteen to nineteen.
Okay.
Yep, because we haven't caught up. But I get asked that question, so that's what I'm saying, it's, to be honest, it's a little apples to oranges. The other thing is, um, keep in mind that the Monitoring the Future Study only tracks grades eight, ten, and twelve. So that's why you're not seeing the other grades in there. So our evaluator kinda did a nice little graph for us. For two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, we're just saying that we have three years' data. So we are seeing a trend down in alcohol. Al, tobacco is a bit all over the space, and again, we are expecting a trend up in tobacco. Marijuana has gone up, and we believe that that has to do with the legalization and the perception of risk or harm. Prescription drugs is kind of oddly an inverse of the tobacco numbers, it looks a little different. And vape is going down, but um, we didn't track that for two thousand seventeen, as I mentioned it. We only started separating that in two thousand eighteen, and that's a cumulative number. So that's an average across all grades. So I will open up, um, open it up to questions, and I'll just mention some of the things that we'll be working on in the upcoming school year. Uh, in the community first, we are gonna be offering a parenting class called Guiding Good Choices. It's a science-based curricula that promotes parenting strategies to help prevent substance use. Sorry, Monday, we have, I think, eleven volunteers who are gonna become trained in that over the course of two Mondays in the summer. They're very committed. It's very nice of them to do that. And then we'll be offering it free to the community, including babysitting and including dinner. So we're trying to remove all barriers to parents taking that. We'll be promoting it heavily among the elementary and middle schools. We use seven strategies for community change, and that's really interesting. And one thing I wanna share with you is that the number-one thing that people say to me is, Amy, if you just tell them how bad marijuana is, they'll stop. Adults say this to me every time. They tell me that all the time. And although education is the cheapest, easiest, and most obvious thing that the coalition can do, it's not the most effective, and that's because everybody puts their twist on things, like we talked about. Oh, it's propaganda. Oh, but what about this study? I'm gonna find a study that counteracts whatever I'm saying, no matter what I'm speaking about. But I'm happy to tell you the thing that we can do that is most effective is change policy. We're working with the Board of Health a lot on things, so, uh, two examples is that North Reading was tobacco twenty-one before the state was. North Reading banned flavor nicotine products before the state did. And we're working with them on, well, we actually, I was at a Board of Health meeting on the day to testify about CBD products and the dangers to consumers. Both sides, by the way, which we have a whole other story about, um, on the day that the state put a ban in. We're also looking at now, because of restrictions on flavored tobacco products, menthols becoming more popular. Menthols were an exemption to the flavor ban. Why, I don't know. It's still a flavor. And so I'm happy to tell you that the Board of Health is looking at a menthol ban now. So we'll be working on all those things, and um, policy is the most effective thing that we can, we can do. And you know, all that does is really remove it from being in their face so much. It doesn't address the behaviors associated with that, or why those things are talking, are happening. And so I really hope to work with the health teachers and maybe even, you know, get a little younger. Has anybody heard of the forty developmental assets by the Search Institute? This is something that I learned about when I was working at the YMCA of Greater Boston. It was something that the Search Institute invested heavily in. It's a checklist that identifies forty assets. Things like, do you have a parent, an adult in your life that's not blood-related to you that you can go to for advice? Do you have a place of worship? These are all things. And it's a list of forty, and the concept is that's science-proven, that the more of the forty things you have, the higher your ability is to risk high-risk behavior, and that includes drugs, sex, all these things, high, high-risk behaviors. And so I think that's something that has come back around. I've heard it come up more and more, and I think that's something that the coalition should look into, how we can support that more in the schools. It's a really interesting survey or checklist for adults to take, to go through and go, you know what, I really didn't have that adult in my life, and maybe things did go a little bit different when I was of this age because I didn't have anybody to talk to. They're now starting to look at its correlation related to mental health. So I don't know if you saw the recent study that if an LGBT student has one adult that's supportive, they're more likely to not commit suicide or have higher risks, stuff like that. They're starting to look more and more of the mental health component of it, which I'm big favor of, because we always see the tie.
What are the law, what are the laws and regulations around vaping right now? I mean, at what age can people buy in the state in, in North Reading?
Twenty-one. It's across the state, but that's for purchasing only on, online. We've talked about this before, is that it's a simple click of the button half the time. And when parents give, you know, Visa gift cards for birthdays or whatever it might be, it makes it pretty easy. I get asked all the time if kids are buying it on Amazon. You cannot buy vape products on Amazon, but you can buy vape accessories and vape paraphernalia on Amazon. I don't know if you've heard, too, Juul is being brought before Congress to testify, and Massachusetts has several lawsuits against them for, for their targeting of children. Mara Healy's been a...
Very aggressive.
Very aggressive, and nationwide, she's been, I think, the top, top prosecutor on that, which is great. And we write advocacy letters quite a bit, and we're, we support that effort.
Um, something I think that you had mentioned this morning at the meeting was, I don't know, growing up, I had three channels to watch. Now we have cable. Not only that, now you have Hulu, Netflix. And so tobacco can't be advertised on television, and now I believe Juul's not advertised on television? Or it's not geared towards children, whereas on Hulu and Netflix and those streamings?
It's unregulated.
It's unregulated, so they make it look cute and fun.
Yeah, so they're, um, they're getting away with a lot of things related to unregulation, so whereas tobacco has some strict, alcohol as well, strict policies related to where, when, how, and what they say, it's a free-for-all for vaping. The reason why Juul is saying that they're not targeting to kids is because they have voluntarily changed their marketing strategy to say, we are all about stopping conventional cigarette use. But be very careful in the wording of that. Yes, if you switch to vaping, you're not using conventional cigarettes. You're just using a different nicotine delivery system. So they're, it's a little lot manipulative. They can help you quit cigarettes, but you're never gonna pick up a different nicotine habit. It's switching one for another. So they are able, they're not false advertising, they can say they can help you with that, but...
And the CDC is very specific about that. They, if I remember reading this correctly, that in certain situations, vaping is a good...
Alternative.
Alternative to smoking, but first of all, only if you eliminate the smoking entirely, which often doesn't happen.
Correct.
Which is a big thing, right?
Correct.
But it's very specific about when it is a, uh, you know, a reasonable alternative, legitimate alternative that would actually help your health outcomes.
I'm really glad you brought that up, because that is their claim to fame, is why you should switch vape, is to, to stop using the cancer-causing cigarette.
Right, it's very narrowly defined, too.
Correct. But we don't know in ten years what that vaping device is gonna have done to you.
And that's the, the other part.
Yes, and we're now, we now, every time a new study comes out, Detective Lucci and I are like, give me that. I wanna read everything. So now we know, and two things that kids actually respond to about education is that it's an aerosol. We didn't know that even a couple of years ago, even two years ago, we couldn't describe it. We would say it as a vapor. It's actually an aerosol, and the way I describe that to kids is you wouldn't go into a room, spray a can of Axe, walk into it and go, huh! That's what it is. We now finally have that science. The other thing is that Juul specifically do release heavy metal, heavy metals. And as the kids go through science class, they understand what that is, and some of those, like lead, is being released. That's, as we learned from Pam Vath at, at the Board of Health today, it's a neurotoxin. So, yeah, you might not get lung disease, but you might have a different problem. We, it's just been around too short of a time for us to have that problem. And I'll, I'll mention as well, related to regulations that have been very interesting, is that two things that affected combustible cigarette use to go down. One was the long-term studies of negative health risks. We don't have that for vaping. The second thing was taxation. We made it too expensive. We don't have that for vaping either. It's not taxed the same. So it's actually cheaper unless you have a really high habit. It's actually cheaper to vape.
It certainly must be cheaper per gram or whatever it is of nicotine delivery.
And I'll give you an example, is that a four-pack of Juul pods right now is about seventeen dollars, and one pod is the equivalent nicotine-wise of a pack of cigarettes. And I'll give you an example, is that a four-pack of Juul pods right now is about seventeen dollars, and one pod is the equivalent nicotine-wise of a pack of cigarettes. So it's like four packs of cigarettes for seventeen dollars, which you know you could never buy. Now, yeah, because of taxation. So we aren't taxing it the same way. And so we're also not getting the revenue on the taxation to put back into prevention either on that. So Massachusetts is a progressive state on that, so that's good.
Thank you. Questions, concerns, comments?
I, um, something to give to you.
Oh, yes.
Yep. So I would like to invite everybody, um, next Tuesday, August sixth, is National Night Out, where we do a lot of prevention work. We do a lot of education. We also eat a lot. It's a free, free barbecue that the police department, um, cooks for us, but we have a l- a big focus this year on suicide prevention. So our clinician, Laura Miranda, will be there to, um, provide resources, but also if somebody just wants to come and say, could I take something for a neighbor? Touch a truck, so there's something for all ages. Uh, seniors are allowed to get a free ride from the senior center. We want everybody to come. And then I have something for Mr. Bernard, which I don't think he knows. So this year, the Coalition, not the grant, but the Coalition celebrated five years, our anniversary, and we had a little celebration, but Mr. Bernard was caught up in a meeting, so I have a certificate of recognition for the North Reading Schools, um, in partnering us for the past five years, because we literally would not have gotten the grant if it weren't for our relationship with the public schools. So I wanted to give that to you.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I take a picture?
Oh, yeah. You wanna get in?
Okay, get in there. Yeah, Marcy, get in.
So Marcy's our Coalition Chair. I don't know if I mentioned that, but Marcy signed it, and I.
You wanna get in the picture? I'll take a picture with you, Marcy.
It's very nice. I should. Did you get it? I jumped in.
And thank you, uh, as well, because, you know, five years of work, it's, it's a long way to change attitudes and behaviors, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Parks.
It's made a difference.
As he retires, we're happy to have, uh, Dr. Daly, but we're really missing him.
Thank you for all you guys are doing.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would just go.
He's on the, on the committee, and she's got great attendance.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we meet on Tuesday morning at, at ten o'clock once a month, usually the last Tuesday of the month. Um, our next meeting's August twenty-seventh at ten AM in Room fourteen Town Hall, but you're always welcome to any meeting. I know it's a tough time for some folks, but if you ever wanna drop in and just see what we do, you find yourself with a free Tuesday morning, and we happen to be meeting, please come by.
And any sort of trends, and you want some special training just for the school committee, Detective Lucci and I are happy to come in, you know, as we get more and more educated about this cratom, stay ahead of the game. Any trends in vaping, marijuana? We're happy to come by and bring you, um, more information and do kind of a hands-on training.
Yes.
Where, where is the meeting? At ten?
At Town Hall.
It's at Town Hall. Yeah, I'm gonna send out an email.
Room fourteen?
Room fourteen, just for this. Usually we meet at the NRPD Community Room, but there's a conflict just for August, so for that date, we're moving, meeting at Town Hall.
Well, and, and I would just, I mean, I would like to thank the Coalition for the work that they do. Um, Marcy, I know, is involved in everything, but Amy, I can't say enough, I mean, like, you are one of the most impressive people that ever comes before us. I mean, you always make you, well, it is because you're at the B C. That's probably what it is, but, no, I mean, like, you, you are so, I mean, you make me feel so old, like, I'm so disconnected from so many things, and and your presentation is just phenomenal, and, I mean, every time you come, I just learn a million things, so thank you.
Thank you. And we're experts at none of this, and trying to stay ahead of everything is a race. But thank you for your support, because we, it's very important to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, real quick.
Of course.
Mentioned about the night out, it would be a great opportunity for the school committee to, I, I, I was there last year and, and just, just to, for us to be visible as we talking, as we talked about community engagement earlier today, so just to show up for an hour.
I think I'm on vacation that week.
I am, too.
That's fine. That's fine. First week of August.
I'll be there.
Thanks for representing us.
Yeah, I will represent.
We have our leadership team retreat. It's, uh, it's conflicted the last three years.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much for that. So I guess we have no continuing business, so I'll go on to new business. The October seventh town meeting warrant articles. Are there any warrant articles that we want to propose? Mr. Bernard, Mr. Connolly, do you have anything that you can think of?
I, I do not know.
The only question I had was about the special education, but that's a, that's a financial one, and are we doing all financial in June, trying to maybe put another hundred thousand away next year as well?
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, that wouldn't come up again until June.
Until June, yeah.
So I don't think there's anything else.
Anticipate the need for you.
Anybody else have any warrant articles that you'd like to propose? Okay. Moving on, the appointment of the North Shore, North Shore Education Consortium Board of Directors. The recommendation, Mr. Bernard, you wanna speak about that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Maybe, it's the same for both of the next two items, the North Shore Consortium and the SEEM Board of Directors. So the committee, um, the, the district is a, is a member of those two special education collaboratives, and in the past, the school committee has appointed the superintendent to serve as the district's representative to the Board of Directors at each collaborative. I'm happy to continue to serve. I know Dr. Daly would be happy to continue to serve once he, um, assumes the superintendency in January, so what I have is a recommendation in, um, each of these items is to appoint me for, um, August of two thousand nineteen through December of two thousand nineteen, and then Dr. Daly from January twenty through, uh, June, uh, excuse me, July twenty twenty.
And I think my, my only question would be, does that make more sense than if putting Dr. Daly for the whole year? I mean, probably.
Uh, I think this is a transition period. I'm gonna bring Dr. Daly. I had a SEEM collaborative meeting this morning. I, I informed the director that I was gonna start to bring him in the fall as a transition meeting, but I think, I think it makes sense for the superintendent to have the voting authority.
And you, and you have been, you, you've been the leader of some of these groups in the past, haven't you? Are you, are you currently this year?
I was the financial representative to the, um, SEEM collaborative.
Are you currently a, 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 like that?
No, it rotates.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Rich? Okay, so should we do these? We should probably do these separately.
I think that makes sense. Yes.
So we have a vote on to appoint.
I'll make a motion to appoint, um, Mr. Bernard from August two thousand nineteen to December two thousand nineteen, and then, uh, Dr. Daly, when he takes over superintendency from January twenty twenty to July twenty twenty as the lead for the North Shore Consortium of Board of Directors.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. On the SEEM?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Bernard from August two thousand nineteen to December two thousand nineteen, and then Dr. Daly, as he takes his new position from January twenty twenty to July twenty twenty, um, for the SEEM Collaborative Board of Directors.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Routine matters. We have our meeting notes. Anyone like to, uh, jump in at meeting notes?
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept the Jul- June third executive session minutes as reported.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Anybody see any errors in that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
I make a motion to accept the open session minutes of June third as written.
Second.
Thirty nineteen.
Not thirty nineteen.
On the agenda. Thirty nine is a typo. Okay, any discussion on, any discussion on the open session? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
I make a motion to accept the open session slash town meeting of June ten as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
And lastly, I make a motion to accept the open session minutes of June seventeen, two thousand nineteen as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We must have some great recorders here to, with no errors in any. Okay, budget update. Mr. Connolly?
Great, thank you. So this evening, in your packet is the final fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget, uh, report. I'm happy to announce that we, uh, experienced a smooth and successful closeout of fiscal year two thousand nineteen. We finished the final county's payable warrant, um, just a, what, a week and a half or so ago. And everything went, went very smooth. As projected, personnel costs remain within budget ranges, and we were able to identify some surplus funds in some salary accounts, insurance and utility accounts. It all worked to assist with our ability to prepay special education tuition payments, and we were able to once again exceed the amount that was forecasted during the FY twenty budget development process. And we were able to meet the carryover, uh, projected balances in transportation and athletic revolving accounts as well, to meet our fiscal year twenty twenty sort of targeted, targeted amounts, so that process went very, very smooth. The food service program closed out the month of June, and I recently completed the final quarterly report and balance, uh, sheet for, um, the food service programs financial activity for fiscal year two thousand nineteen. They were able to earn a small net profit in the month of June, and I, once again, I'm happy to report that we've had our second consecutive break-even or profitable, uh, year in the food service program, earning a little over, uh, more than two thousand five hundred dollars, uh, for the year. Certainly pleased with the, the program's performance over the status, over the course of the two thousand nineteen, twenty, uh, I'm sorry, eighteen, nineteen school year. The average daily male participation was up on average across the district at all five schools by about seven and a half percent. Adult sales were up, um, by almost a total of twenty percent this school year, which to me showed some of the new initiatives with the additions of the salad bar at the middle school and the high school. Certainly made a difference. We added the salad bar this year at the middle school. And we will be adding a breakfast program at all elementary schools next year, so I think the Bachelor Elementary School Program, which is sort of a pilot elementary breakfast program this past school year, uh, really grew throughout the year. It started out very small. It was really an Arla Cart-type program, and we were able to actually recoup some, um, increased federal reimbursement meals by selling more type-eight breakfast meals over the final quarter of the, the year, which made a big difference. So we're hoping to experience that same success at all three elementary schools. So I am pleased that all, all five schools will have a breakfast program and an option for students, um, next, next school year. That's been a long-range initiative that will be fulfilled next, next school year.
Mike, just a real quick question.
Yeah.
Um, so the monies that you make as a profit, does that go back into, like, kitchen, uh, equipment, stuff of that nature?
So all the, the monies stay within the food service, uh, revolving account, um, and any remaining balance or carryover balance certainly goes to support. There's a lot of capital needs and, um, up, updates that need to happen on an ongoing basis. We actually are making some, um, improvements to some of the equipment. Uh, Hood School Serving Line is getting some, some, some upgrades, this much-needed upgrades this, this school year, this summer. And then we have a preventative maintenance program with a provider that will come and kind of refurbish, um, not only the refrigeration equipment, but the, the kitchen equipment as well. So that, that all, it all goes back to the program and serves to, um, certainly help, help the needs of that program.
Okay, thank you.
Again, on the payroll side of the report, um, really nothing significant to report. You know, certainly final payroll expenses were very close to our budgeted amounts. So despite some unanticipated costs that we did incur, um, more early on this year in the areas of sort of some, some HVAC needs and plumbing needs, you know, we made it through sort of a, a cold, a cold winter. We were certainly able to achieve, um, year-end carryover funds we planned on during the fiscal year twenty twenty budget process, and I'm certainly pleased with how the two thousand nineteen fiscal year closed out. I do think we are in solid financial standing as we, um, begin the, the next fiscal year, fiscal year twenty.
Do you remember what the winter was? Was it average in terms of, I don't know, what do they call them, degree days?
Degree days, yeah. It was about, the, the heating degree days were about average. Uh, it, I think, may, it was somewhat of a cold winter. It might have been slightly above average in terms of heating, heating degree days, but the, the snow was down.
Yeah.
So certainly, things like overtime costs and snow removal costs was, was lower than it had been in the past, but I think certainly our gas consumption was a little bit higher. I noticed the heating degree days went later into the season than we had seen. But, you know, overall, we, I think we, we did pretty well controlling costs and so forth this year, in mitigating some, some unforeseen that occurred on, on the facility side. So, um, any other questions?
So with the, um, with the circuit breaker, the extraordinary relief that we, we receive for special education, is that included in the numbers here?
So that is, that, that, those funding certainly flows into the, a, you know, reimbursement revolving account.
I just didn't know if it had, if it had been received, and it's part of it now.
It's all received, and it certainly, you know, has a, an impact on these numbers, um, that those, the funding that we anticipated would be there and would roll over is in that account that would be made available in fiscal twenty is there.
So the original forecasted budget, uh, forecasted amount for the prepayments, was that part of, was that part of the budget?
So we had forecasted an amount during the process.
That is in the budgeted amount already.
Correct.
And that's the amount above that.
Correct, yeah. So we, we forecasted about a hundred thousand dollars, um, which we were able to exceed. We actually paid, probably honestly, we paid about three hundred thousand. So that, that additional, um, amount that we've exceeded, which we've been able to do over the last few years, will, right now, you know, certainly work to be a level of flexibility and to deal with, and now the layer of us to deal with sort of unforeseen costs.
Say pending, uh, uh, the inevitable last minute.
Yep.
And again, but that, but that, I mean, it's needed because the base is gonna go up for next year because of, the reason we got extraordinary relief is because there were so, the expenses, expenses were so much higher than anticipated this year.
Correct.
So our base goes up for next year.
Yep.
So it's, it's just a higher base, so it's not.
Right.
Yeah.
So the baseline will be higher, um, and, you know, I'm, for what I'm hearing at the state level, we should see that account, circuit breaker program funded pretty close to a fully funded amount, close to seventy-five percent, which would be great. Our fourth quarter payment, as it typically is, was about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars higher than, um, because they had some available monies left, and that, that does happen. Sometimes the fourth quarter payment is a little bit higher. So on June thirtieth, we get a little bit more money, um, in that account, which is help, all these things are sort of really helpful for dealing with, which quite honestly is the biggest kind of volat- volatile area of our, our budget. So.
We wanna, do I do all the gifts and donation things together now? So Michael, do you wanna start with your memo on
Yeah.
FY nineteen gifts and donations?
That'd be great, yes. So I have a couple of supplemental, uh, budget update reports. One is the the memorandum that we've been doing over the last four or five years that details on a spreadsheet all of the, both cash donations and in-kind donations that we received from the start of the fiscal year, so this would be July one two thousand eighteen through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. The spreadsheet does include the final quarter of the in-kind donations from the five parent organizations or associations at the five schools, which we were able to, uh, reconcile and, and balance those quarterly in-kind spreadsheets, um, in July. So tho- those amounts that would be essentially recognized this evening is included on the, the, the full year report as well. But I'm happy to report that we received and accepted a little over two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars over the course of this fiscal year. Two hundred, two hundred thousand thirteen, two hundred thirteen thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars and forty cents. So as you can see by the, the long, you know, almost two and a half-page list of donations dating back to last July, really helped support things like additional expenses for athletic teams, fitness equipment, transportation expenses for class field trips, various classroom supplies, um, technology and makerspace supplies and equipment, drama, musical production expenses, expenses in support of events like Parent University, for example, and many other enrichment activities across the district. So that's just kind of a few of, um, some of the ver- the, the various items that these, um, ver- donations have worked to support. We certainly present during the budget process that the annual average is about a hundred and seventy-five thousand or so of, of these gifts and donations. We've exceeded that this year, but we're at two hundred and thirteen. So, um, you know, last year, we were at a hundred and ninety-six thousand. I went back and looked, so we certainly continue to greatly appreciate the support of the, the various donors, which is a combination of the, the, the parent groups, the support groups, private donate, don- donors, parents, and various parents helping with some field trips and, um, you know, some, some local businesses and so forth, making some in-kind donations, so certainly very, very appreciative of those. And then, um.
So maybe before, I mean, I, I just think it's worth noting. I mean, I think we, we, we thank people every week, but it, I think we, we understand on the committee here that we are very fortunate in this community that we're in, because we have very high taxes to begin with. We understand that. We don't, you know, have a lot of businesses in this community. We have some that are very good to us. Um, we have fees for programs, and then on And then on top of all of that, it's the same people in this community over and over that are giving that, you know, they, they're paying the taxes and they're paying the fees for their kids and they're still supporting above and beyond that. You know, more than $200,000 is just, we're very, very fortunate and we love not to have to have all those fees. We'd love not to have to have this. But at the same time, I don't think anybody up here wants to cut services or cut the, what we're delivering to the students. And so that only is possible because of what the people in this community do. So.
Great, well said.
Thank you. Okay. We have four memos from you, so pick your next one.
Yeah, so I mean, I know the, I'll kind of skip past the, the individual gifts and donations noted for this evening, because I think those need to have a motion that can kind of go with the other gifts.
Yep.
When we get to that agenda item that are listed this evening as well. But I did, I did want to talk about the student activity quarter four report. So as is our practice, we've been presenting quarterly as we've sort of reconciled our bank account balances for this, the five student activity accounts at each school. So this report reflects activities for the final quarter of fiscal year 2019, which essentially represents the time period of April 1st through June 30th. But we recently completed our, our work on the student activity accounts for this past fiscal year and certified our bank balances just these past, this past week. So what's reflected on the report, as has been our practice over the last couple of years, is the, the five schools' student activity balances, which you can see there, which are now reconciled to the, the bank accounts. And then because of the high school and the middle school have the various sub-accounts, we've broken down the active student activity clubs with active account balances on the subsequent pages. You can sort of certainly take a, take a look at those. But I think, I think an inheritance to our policy and, and so forth, I think these, these accounts continue to be in, in, in good shape. So I'll just take.
Mike, just a quick question for you. So I see 2019 as a class has a very small amount of money and because they've, they've finished up, they spent it, and they've done those things. What happens to what's left of that money now that those kids are gone?
So what they would do is typically, I think that probably reflects the balance after they've probably made a donation back to the class, which is in support.
They made a gift donation.
In support of a sign.
And that's basically typical for the, whatever the remainder is?
Well, the, the, any, well, Michael can answer your question about what the balance, but he, he works with the student offices of the class to.
Right.
Transfer that money, but I'll let him.
Yeah, so that, the, our policy allows them, well, 90 days to create a, a class reunion account. So their, their class offices do that. And then we would make out, once they've done that, they, they give us the account information and this balance gets made out as for deposit only into that account.
I see.
And it's given to the class president and class treasurer.
Gotcha.
And it usually, it kind of usually happens sometime in, around Thanksgiving break, quite honestly, by the time they come in.
They're home from school.
And then they'll deposit into that account.
Cool, thank you then.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Do you want to do bids and donation or do staffing next?
Whatever, your pleasure is.
I'd say we just keep going with bids and donations.
Money, money, money talks, right? That's, that's.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for the above list of school activities and expenses from April to June 2019 from the North Reading High School Parents Association totaling 12, I'm sorry, yeah, $1,285.55.
Second.
Hi. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations of the above list of school, for the above list, list of school activities and expenses from April to June of 2019 from the North Reading Middle School Parents Association totaling $5,045.29.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for the above list of school activities and expenses from April to June 2019 from the J.T. Hood Elementary School Parents Association totaling $9,942.23.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
I move that the school committee votes to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for the above list of school activities and expenses from April to June 2019 from the E.E. Little Elementary School Parents Association totaling $10,746.99.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
And I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for the above list of school activities and expenses from April to June of 2019 from the L.D. Batch Elder Elementary School Parents Organization totaling $16,716.20.
I'm sorry, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And Michael, were these, this is all part of the $213,000?
It is, yeah. Everything this evening, these plus the ones that.
The next one.
The next ones as well.
Okay.
Could be part of it.
Perfect. Want to keep going?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a total donation of $200 from various donors from friends and family of Charles E. Jones for the Charles E. Jones Educator Excellence Award in memory of Charles E. Jones, former middle school assistant principal, in the amounts of Fred and Janice Lomas for $100 and Jeffrey and Patricia Bemis for $100.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $174 from Barry and Furma Kipnis to support the high school boys' basketball team.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude supplies and materials valued at $218.65 from Moynihan Lumber to support Christopher Nearing's Eagle Scout project to build a school storage shed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a total donation of $325 from various donors from friends and family of Charles E. Jones for the Charles E. Jones Educator Excellence Award in memory of Charles E. Jones, former middle school assistant principal. Donations by Gail Poploski, Peter and Roberta Shaw, Leo and Joanne Mastronzi, Daniel and Priscilla Hurley, William and Sharon Gouveia.
Oh, second.
That's impressive, I'm not going to lie, Rich. All those in favor?
Assuming I got it right.
You did, you did.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $449.85 from DonorsChoose.org and Judith Chason to support Jana Como's music class.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a total donation of $1,038.65 from the Batch Elder Elementary School Parents Association to support batch elder school wish list items.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $1,107.50 from the North Reading Music Boosters to support music in the park bus transportation fees.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
And I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $4,000 from the North Reading Middle School Parents Association to be used at the principal's discretion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $10,000 from Jim and Paula DeRozers to support the Drama Maskers Department. Wow.
Second.
So on discussion on this one, this is a sort of donation that I think we should invite them in.
I think.
To actually recognize them. They wrote a nice letter afterwards about it as well. And so I don't know what, what people think, but maybe.
It's a great example.
And maybe when we go in, even in September, we could maybe invite them to a school committee meeting, just to thank them.
It's a, quite a gesture.
Yes.
It certainly is.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting the donation?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
And that is it.
Well done.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Bernard.
I'll thank it for me.
It was for you.
Bring that in.
We're going to put it in the thank you letter. I'll, I'll schedule it for September meeting.
Thank you.
That's what we were just talking about.
Okay, thank you.
So we send every donation we get. Michael generates a thank you letter, personalized. And I think this is the kind of thing, I think in that letter, we can identify a date for a school committee member for people to, to come in and be recognized and thanked by you publicly. So that's, I think, that's kind of the mechanism we're, we're used to do that. So as you might expect, this is, you know, this is, we're in the height of our hiring season for the new school year. So I have a number of new staff to, to introduce to you this evening. Starting at the Batch Elder School, we have a new halftime, a .5 FTE kindergarten teacher in Karen Bext. Sarah Fitzpatrick, a graduate of North Reading Public Schools, will be a grade four teacher in a long-term substitute position for the year. Jennifer Peterson is a new grade one teacher. She had previously been employed in the district, but is now a permanent employee. Stacy Powinski has been hired as a .6 long-term substitute for the, for the school year as an R teacher at the Batch Elder School. At the Hood School, Ally Hughes has been hired as a grade three teacher. And Sarah Leekwig has been hired as a .5 FTE kindergarten teacher. At the Little School, Ashley Zinchuck, who also had been employed in the district as a paraprofessional, is now going to be a special education teacher in the pre-K program. At the middle school, Cynthia Friedman has been hired as a science teacher. Jason Perella has been hired as a special education teacher. We welcome Allison Stewart as a science teacher and Susan Sussman as a new digital learning and computer science teacher, again, all at the middle school. I'm happy to tell you that Mr. Hain will continue for one more year as the interim assistant principal at, at the high school. He's done a very nice job for us this past year and we're happy to have him back for one more school year. And then for the district hires, we have Paul Avagian, who has been hired as a new digital learning specialist. He'll be working across the district at all five schools and will also be teaching a class or two at the high school. Lauren Hinchen has been hired as an elementary speech language pathologist. And Daniel Muse has been hired as an elementary instrumental music teacher. We do still have a number of available positions that we're working to, to fill, but I have every confidence that we'll have a full complement of staff for the opening of schools. So welcome to all of our, our new staff thus far.
I have one question. When we were doing the budget, we were talking about, I think it was as part of the middle school transition, there was a position that we were hoping somebody might want to go from .5.
Foreign language, yes.
.5, did that person?
.5 went to .9, I believe.
Yeah, .9.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
Sure.
Well, the committee, just the committee.
Just kind of going back to the, if you don't mind, but.
Of course.
Um, to the donations, would it be nice to have like maybe the schools come in or address them where we're at their schools for their PAs?
Oh, when you do the visiting meetings?
Yeah. It was just because the $4,000 that.
As opposed to like a random identification of a date? Do it at the school at which the donation was received? I think that's a nice idea, yeah.
I mean, because we travel to the different schools anyway.
Well, I think she's talking about the, about the PA, the, the parent association. We reckon as the parent association.
Oh, oh, as we've done, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the donors.
Well, they are.
You're, you're saying as the parents associations being on the, on the site meeting that we have at that school, bring that group in.
As a thank you, yeah. I mean, they just donated, you know, $4,000 to.
Again, you look at the total.
$16,000, $10,000. That's just.
If you look at the total, the total from each element.
Yeah, that's just, that's just one quarter. Yeah, I think we had, I think we had years ago asked the parents association rep, to send a representative at, at, at those meetings when they held at the school. So we can start that again this year, yeah. I think the first one, I know this is January, I don't have the schedule in front of me, but yes, I think we can. I think that's a nice idea.
All right. Subcommittee update, NORC board of directors, I am not the representative anymore, so I cannot go and maybe Mr. McGowan may have.
Yes, I regret to report that I did not attend the board of directors meeting in June. I, so I don't really have an update.
Policy Subcommittee, you have an update on that? Mr. McGowan or Mr.?
Mr. Papa Vasilevsky.
Sure, yeah. We, we continue to add commas where necessary.
It's always good to have an English.
He's not, he's not joking. We did do a lot of comma work today.
But yeah, the, the most major changes we, we looked at today were that a series of different policies all indicated a number of criteria for advancement for non-certified personnel in their salary schedule, which is not in keeping, the policy is not in keeping with our practice nor with the direction in which we, we typically like to go. So we had adapted that language to match our current practice, which is that there are certain expected things teachers will do and they'll be evaluated at the, or not teachers, sorry, non-certified personnel will do and they'll be evaluated at the stipulated intervals in their contracts. And that won't have anything to do with their salaries per se.
And you'll see some of those changes coming forward in a future meeting.
Yeah, those were really.
So we were through section G.
Yep.
So we're making good progress.
I think it's fair to say that, you know, I think probably at the August meeting, I'll have a few things to bring forward to the full committee that, that Mr. McGowan, Mr. Papa Vasilevsky and I decided we should, you know, they may not necessarily be in the act of a first reading.
Right.
But they might be revisions. I think that's more of that, wouldn't you say?
Yeah, I think there was one or two that we might have, that we'll need to actually have votes on. Others are, we made changes to language to clarify and just probably want to bring them forward to you guys to tell you about so that you can object if you think that we did a bad job of that, but that don't really require.
Or wordsmith it further, but not necessarily warrant a first or second reading.
Because we're not changing the meaning.
Substance of the.
Yeah. I mean, I rarely have any changes to these things, so.
Right, yeah, you're very quiet about these things.
Committee's moving very quickly.
The contract.
Just saying.
Contract Subcommittee, I will say, we also kind of have, had some discussions about the administrator contracts and just looking at those because in anticipation of hiring the superintendent and also there's a number of those contracts that are negotiated, being negotiated in the next year, in the next six months. Subcommittee schedule, following meetings are all at the superintendent conference room, finance planning team, August 22nd at 8:15 a.m. Athletic Subcommittee, September 18th at 12:30 p.m. Fine Art Subcommittee, September 25th at 2:30 p.m. Policy Subcommittee, September 25th at 3:30 p.m. And then the NORC board of directors will meet at the NORC office on September 26th at 7 p.m.
I promised to be there.
Oh, there we go. It's a promise on the record. Administrative, at least one person from NORC is here watching, so.
Exactly, that's fair enough, yeah.
Administrative report, Mr. Bernard.
So Mr. Chairman and for the members of the committee, I included in, I guess this kind of overlaps into correspondence, but I'll, I'll speak to you about two letters by the Massachusetts Foreign Language Association for their support of a poster contest that was hosted by that professional organization. And I thought, I thought it was number one, a very nice letter, and number two, I think a very, very pleasing thing for me to receive, knowing that the, the group took the time to, to send a personal letter to me acknowledging the efforts of those two teachers, so I wanted to share that with you. And then the second one is regarding Mr. Owens, Mr. Ben Owens, who is, has recently completed his first year in the district as, as our band director and a teacher of music. And he, he has, you know, done a very, very nice job in it as, in his own right as a teacher here, but I thought his, expanding his work with the Northeast Massachusetts Music Educators Association and to have received a letter of, of commendation for the effort that he put forth this year and looking forward to his joining the group again next year was worthy of, of sharing with you, so.
I'd just say Mr. Owens' name keeps coming up. He's setting that bar pretty high for himself going forward.
He's had, he had a very good first year, that's for sure. And I, obviously I know all three of them very well and they're well-deserved letters. You know, it's nice to see others recognize their talents and acknowledge them, so again, I thought it was nice to share with you.
The other thing that wasn't in here, which I know that Dr. Daley and I think you were also very proud of, was there was a New York Times article about Google Glass in which-
Yes, there was, yeah, there was.
If you could speak to that quickly too.
Yeah, so there, there, we, we have been partnering, partnering with some other districts locally on a, how would I describe it? An instructional assist, an assistive technology tool, particularly for children with autism. Google Glass, as you said, and it was, we were profiled in a, in a recent New York Times article, it was on Twitter, I think Patrick put it out and then I, I retweeted that and he was mentioned specifically as having brought that, that device to, to North Reading, but he also has a personal use with it, with his own son in his district. And it was, it was a pretty, it was a pretty nice feather in our cap. And to see the device actually used with students, it's a, it's a kind of a, it's a device that assists them in making visual eye contact, direct eye contact with people, which often can be difficult. And it just, it, 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 it has a pretty significant positive impact on, on the child's